Okay. So it looks like we've got. Um. We've got. Five, five regular members here still and the two, the two alternates. So the two alternates will be voting. This evening.
At this point.
Yeah.
You have somebody else comes in, then one of us drops off.
Well, let's, let's talk about that, Norm, when we get to the rules of procedure.
Okay, sure, yeah.
How flexible we want to be.
Yeah.
When to meeting. Okay, first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Jerry.
Second.
Second by Howard, I think he beat you, Sherman. Any changes? Any discussions? All those in favor of the agenda, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next item on our agenda is public comment. But I don't see anyone other than you're already on the agenda, Mr. Cleary. I guess we can skip over that. New business, we have you as old business. Since you've been here before. New business, uh, quickly, Bill, if you're still on the line. Or.
Yep.
Are you there?
Yep.
Okay. I went to write something for the circle. And I wanted to direct people to the online Stormwater online map we have. And. You know, they have to go through the ordinances, they have to go through a number of steps to find it. I was wondering if we could put it on the homepage somewhere. Some link. To it or somewhere that's a little easier to access.
So this. Homepage is a little, a little crowded, but. What, what I have in my house right here and just me, me. Show you what I have, where, where, I'm, I'll show you the easy way to get to it. Um, and. There we go. So. Here is the, here is the homepage.
Yeah, um, let's see. This is dialogue box right in the middle about this meeting's being recorded. It's not on my laptop.
If someone wants to click it, it'll go away.
Oh, is it? Can I use the remote?
No, you gotta use the mouse on the computer in the corner.
Oh, okay, thanks very bad.
Sorry, forget about that one.
Okay, all clear.
Okay, so this is the homepage. Under ordinances, there's Stormwater. And when you go to that page, it's right here. It's one, it's one section all for Stormwater, so it's as close to the homepage as I can really get it. But I am, I am working with our vendor on a few updates to the website. As we go through it, so. But yeah, that's, that's about as close as I can get it for right now, but it's just ordinances and Stormwater and then all, all of the information is right there.
Yeah. Is there any way we could shorthand the address at some point because, because, okay, this is the circle. And it's not digital.
Yeah.
It's just hard copy, so I would have to, I would have to, you know, spell out the whole address, yeah.
Nope, that's all you need right there is rutlandtown.com forward slash storm hyphen water. That's, that's actually pretty short.
Yeah, it is. I thought it was longer than that, okay.
No, so that, that would work right there.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for walking me through that.
Yep.
No, us.
Also. We're gonna be able to discuss those some summers in this agenda tonight.
Oh, yeah, we forgot to, to add it to the agenda. Look, let's, let's put it. Let's put it down in announcements news. Okay. Okay, old business. And Mr. Cleary. And. If you, why don't you? Go up to that microphone right there in that little table, if you want to just scoot one of those chairs a little bit closer. It might be the easiest thing to do and. Because, you know, we're recording this.
Yes.
Pass some of these copies out that we've got here. We've got copies of this map.
Okay, and I'm not sure, Bill, you can, you probably could not get the plaque. We put up on screen. Because of the side.
No, I, I didn't have a way to scan that, I didn't have it digitally, so, no.
Okay. Mr. Cleary, um. Could you just refresh our memory?
Yes.
About what your intentions are and. What has happened since your last time you were here?
Okay. Since the last time I was here. Mr. Tinker has finished. The survey showing the proposed boundary line adjustments to the existing subdivision confines. Involving the. Donors who are the Buttricks. And they are in parcel C on the survey plan. And they originally. Owned, and well, still do, parcel C, parcel B, and parcel A. They are going to be conveying. To. Dr. De Simone's family trust. Called Vermont Mountain View Properties LLC. Parcel A. Which is approximately 2.11 acres. And they're going to be conveying parcel B. To the Cleary family trust. Which is about 4.6 acres, 4.58. And then. Parcel C will be the remaining. So-called leftover land that the Buttricks is our keeping. And that will give them 3.9 acres, whereas before I think they had 10 point something. So. All we did within the existing confines of the property lines of the subdivision. Was adjust the lines. To show. The Buttricks as donors. Giving. The parcel B to the Clearys and the parcel A to Dr. De Simone's trust. And that's basically it, Barbara. I gave Bill, I don't know if you have it, you probably do. A, an explanation on Friday, October 1 in an email. Basically pointing out. What the so-called plan was of the boundary line adjustments. And that just spells out in a little more detail what I just said. So basically. Uh, that's it. I gave Bill a Mylar and five or six copies. And as soon as we have that, uh, public hearing on the 28th. And on the assumption that things are approved. Then I will prepare the deeds. For signatures by Mr. And Mrs. Buttricks. Giving. 4.5 acres to the Cleary Trust. And 2.11 acres to the De Simone Trust. And that'll be it.
Is this the final plat, this the plat you plan on recording?
Yes. Subject, any changes that you want to make?
A question I had is. The Vermont, the Mountain View Properties. Sure. The property isn't showing completely, if you, if you look on it. Where the Cleary properties. It's shown completely, it's got all, you know, four sides to their parcel.
Right.
But there's, there's a few more lines that could, and not many lines to complete it. Just a few more lines added. To, uh, to what's there to, to, you know, clearly show. Where mountain, where parcel A is going.
Okay.
Which lines are missing there, Howard?
You know. Let me grab, I can grab a parcel map and it might help the show it, let me just grab that.
Yeah, the old, the, the map that I originally got a copy of here does show.
I think. Barbara, see, he's likely to get this. Completed so you can see where this abuts, I think, this, uh, Vermont, that's what he's saying, you know, like this one, you can see the whole side.
Right.
Be nice to see.
Yeah, because the adjoining owners for De Simone are Dr. Lovett. And then the Jacobowskis. I think.
I think Howard's just saying, since we have the clarity of the properties to the northeast of that, it'd be nice to see what's. Where those boundary lines are in the south.
Okay.
This shows it very clearly. Here, uh, I don't know where you want, I can lay down over here if you want to stop and take a peek at it, it's, uh. This is the, this is the parcel we're talking about. What's missing is this line here. This line here and probably just that.
Yeah, just to.
One other one, I mean. Now we just to complete. Doing it, uh. Mount, Mountain View parcel.
Right.
It's got, um.
It's just missing a few.
Yeah, because. This line is there.
Yeah, this one's.
And this line is there, but this is missing. This is, the three lines missing. Basically, that, that, and that.
To show the exact confines.
I have it on the screen if you guys want to describe it for everybody not there.
Oh yeah, Bill's got it up on the screen. Turn it on, Davey, you'll see it.
Yep. Yeah, that's the one I worked from originally when I talked to the neighbors.
So it's just those three lines, Bill, that are missing. Yeah, that's one, yeah.
One, then two, and then three to the top.
Yeah, then that.
I can have Tinker put those on another Mylar, well, and then make copies.
Make copies again.
Yep. Well, I think, I think the fine, you don't think we need any more copies, just the final one should have those on there and that's it, like, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't need any more copies.
Final reportable Mylar, you know, if he can put it on this Mylar, that's fine too.
Oh, all right. I bet he can.
He can.
Cause he does it on his computer, so, okay.
Yeah.
Great, then I'll take that one back with me. Bill and everybody, if that's okay.
Yeah, Howard, just give him, just write, write it in or draw it in on one of the paper copies and give, and give him back the paper copy in the Mylar and should be good.
Okay.
It's over.
You're good, you, you, you know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um. On our form, so this would be, we've got, Bill started the, um. Permit, the application forms for boundary line adjustment for both parcel A and B. So, uh, number one for us to look at is the proposed changes to the boundary lines and, and we would say. This is parcel A. So parcel A is not satisfactory at this point. Until we.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, parcel A is Buttricks to Mountain View.
And that's, that's the one that's not complete.
Um, name and address, a professional preparer is satisfactory. I'm doing both of these at the same time, A and B. It's around the same Mylar anyway. Um, number three is numerical and draft and graphic scale of plan, a date and north arrow.
Yep, that's all there.
Okay. Four, existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements. Wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes, and rights of way.
Well, we're not really showing all that, we're not showing the wooded areas and.
Usually waive most of that.
We really.
Yeah, and the subdivision and, and, um, we usually just. Rather loose with the boundary line adjustments. So we'll say that's satisfactory, we've got the rights of way. And. Any utilities?
No, no utilities, just the highway and that's. I think that's it.
Are there utility easements by CV to the end of, for the individual service?
Uh, yeah, must be, because they run right along McKinley Ave.
So they probably should. Go ahead, Norm.
I was just gonna say there, usually the homeowners each give a utility easement. To CV, I don't know that it's necessary, it's a lot of detail. We could, we could waive that, but. That's what it means to me when I look at this.
Yep.
Okay. And then the last one is a location map, we've got that too. Okay. Okay, Mr. Cleary, so just a slightly more refined.
Yep.
Flat. And. Let's see you.
On the 28th. And I'll get those amendments to you, or the modifications, as soon as I can get Tinker to re-gramp them.
Yeah. Roll this up.
Yeah. Great. Thanks, Art.
More, rolling in.
I'll have him, I'll have him make copies of the new stuff, oh, you.
We don't need it.
You won't, you need more copies.
We don't need copies, as long as the original comes in with those additional lines.
Right.
One thing that's missing. Our Bill and I talked about it today is, uh. Being a digital copy of these survey flats.
Uh huh.
And the surveyor. For, for the mapping purposes, the maps that, these parcel maps that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Let's start getting a digital.
Yeah.
Something maybe we should add, or can we?
Is that something he can do, Tinker can do, do you know?
He should be able to.
I think so.
Okay, so I'll have him amend the Mylar. And then do quote, a digital.
Yeah, provide us a digital disc or something so we can have it, so.
To work with.
So we can send it to our mapper when he updates the maps.
Okay.
Yeah, just that, that map as like a PDF would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bill, maybe we should add that to our application. At some point.
We can do whatever we like, but that would be wonderful, yes.
Always the right answer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions, glad to answer, otherwise. I'll get it to you and, or to Bill and, uh, plan on seeing you on the 28th.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, for all your time and consideration and all you Zoomers.
Be careful.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is. See if we can finalize the rules of procedure this evening, this is a template that. Bill received from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And we took a pretty close look at it last time. Uh, Norm. Was not able, Norm was not in attendance. And has some questions, and then I also, um, added. A, a sentence to number three under C. Uh, about announcing which members, regular and alternate, are voting members for that meeting. So Norm, let me kick it over to you for what you noticed in the latest draft.
Okay, I'm just gonna work from the latest draft and not my first one, Barb, okay? Of my two comment, I sent two different ones to you. Uh, on number five under C. It says motions made by members of the body. Do require a second. It just seems to me require a second or must be seconded. Would, the word do seems unnecessary.
Right, we can just take that word out, probably.
Yes, that's my suggestion, yes. In the second. In the third sentence, it just seems awkward. Uh, it's now reads, a motion will only pass. If it receives the votes of a majority of the total membership of the body. I think it. Should say, a motion will pass. If it receives, a motion to pass must receive a majority vote of the total membership of the body. The other possible, yeah, we don't need the word only.
Motion to pass.
A motion.
Will, will pass if it receives, just take out the, um, only.
Well, I think you can say, a motion to pass must receive. The votes of a majority of, it's more affirmative that way.
Okay.
Okay, in number six. Motion to close or.
Hang on a second, Norm, this is Dana.
Yep.
I, I'm lost on that last change, I followed it for a bit and then I got, I got lost. Barbara, do you go over that again?
Yeah, I think it should say. Um. A motion.
Yeah.
Must receive. A majority. Must receive the votes of a majority. Of the. Membership of the body to pass.
Barbara, I've got a comment there.
Yeah.
I, I think we're almost making this a little bit more convoluted. Because I think that when you're talking about a majority of the total membership. That you don't want to change that because the total membership is seven, correct? And if there are fewer than seven, you still need a majority which would still be four. Anything that would change to that language would omit that requirement, my, on my reading.
Yeah, I think what it's. Trying to say here is that. Every motion has to have a majority of. The total membership of the body, has to have at least four votes. That's how I read it, that's how others read it.
So why don't you, why don't we just say? A motion must have four votes to pass.
At least four votes.
At least four votes to pass. Does that satisfy you, Dana?
Well, the question is, are you gonna carry that through for every other place where it talks about a majority?
Well, let's see how it works when we go.
It needs, it needs four yes votes to pass, is what he's trying to say.
Yeah, yes.
Four affirmative votes.
It's, and it's.
Does it, does it not seem like we're reinventing the wheel here, what's wrong with the way it is? I mean, what's wrong with leaving it consistent throughout? It is, am I wrong?
Well, the word only. I started by thinking that. Uh, the word only was. In the wrong place. And then, as we've talked this evening, I think it needs some reworking. Or it came to me, it might need it, so if it said a motion will pass only if it receives. The votes of a majority of the total membership, that's fine too, but the word only was what started me thinking, it's in the wrong place.
Okay. Let's.
If you want to leave it that way, maybe that'll satisfy everybody.
I'm good with that from a linguistic standpoint. A motion will, uh, a motion that passes only if it receives. And then to Jerry's point, we can leave it and make it simple.
Right, throughout, you know, without changing a bunch of.
The same reference, so. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Norm.
Okay, in six. Uh, motion to close or limit debate. Excuse me. Six, for second sentence. I think a word is missing, it currently says, a motion, a member may speak. Or make a motion without being recognized by the chair. I think it ought to say, a member may not speak. Without being recognized. By the chair.
Yeah, but we don't always abide by that either, I mean, just, just with the natural flow of a, you know, discussion. Any, any comments?
I have one. It's Dana.
Yeah. You're recognized.
We had a conversation about that last time and decided that we want, we didn't want the. The rules for procedure to be overly restrictive and to be in conflict with our practice. So I think, uh, the group present made a conscious decision to leave that as. Uh, as it was stated, a member may speak or make a motion without being recognized by the chair, so that was intentional.
We crossed that out last time. Only, only after, without, we eliminated that. I think last time.
We eliminated that whole sentence?
No, 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 that, that only after.
Being recognized by the chair.
So we, we just read, a, a member may speak or make a motion. Being recognized by the chair.
No, without being recognized by the chair, I think Howard was the way it was. Because we had a choice.
I. I don't think we ought to recognize motions. Uh, without being recognized. Um. I think, I think that's a danger, I think that's a danger, I understand. That we do, look, we're a collegial group, we all get along, we all like each other, been working together for a long time. And it's very comfortable. But I think. For a motion to be made. Without being recognized by the chair, really. It's a practice that. Could contribute to disorderly meetings. And I would. I, I just would not recommend.
I see your point, Norm, with motions, but, um, the other part of the sentence is just speaking, discussing something.
Yeah, so could I be recognized? See, that's the whole point, that, that's just, it's too cumbersome and we don't need it. We know, we haven't, I mean, if, if the motion thing, if everybody's in favor of making sure that the chair recognizes somebody to make a motion. So be it, but just in general, I think that's crazy. I think it's gonna slow this thing up more than it gets slowed up as it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I often just say, you know, is there, does anyone have a motion? If someone want to make a motion on this.
Well, then you.
Dana.
Barbara, I, I, I think you're right. And. The, uh, if, if it's getting disorderly, the chair could always call for a point of order.
Yeah, or anyone can.
Anybody, well, yes. And, and so I think that, given that. We can restore order to the, the, the potential chaos that might be feared. And, uh, you're right, you offer it to anybody to speak, sometimes people raise their hand. And if there's a conversation going along, rather than butt in, people will raise their hand to be acknowledged. At, at an appropriate time, and I think that, uh, there's something to be said to what Jerry's advocating. And that is that we, uh, allow it. To be free flowing. Unless there's a reason to call for a point of order.
Right. Okay. Norm, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, you had another one in this, in number six?
Um, yeah, uh, just motions to close or limit debate. Uh. Will be entertained, I, I was thinking it. Should be shall, but. It might, that may be too restrictive, I mean, shall is compulsory. And.
Yes.
Um. It maybe. It, with this particular type of motion, the word shall is appropriate. Will is kind of aspirational, shall is more compulsory. And that's been held up by the Supreme Court frequently. Um, it, it's a nitpick, if you like shall, fine, if will, we can survive with it.
What does the group think? Um, I mean, there's, I guess there could be instances where someone wants to cut off debate. And, you know, vote on a motion or proceed in some other way. Um, whereas. Maybe other members of the group are not ready to do that, so does this allow one person to shut off? All remaining debate?
Well, it, it, it must have to pass.
It would require a second also.
What's that, Sherman?
Wouldn't it require a second? If, if, if there's a motion to end debate, it would also require a second. Before we, we would.
Um. I said yes, I'm not sure I've. A person may. And, and, anyone speak up.
Yes, so. The, uh, the. If, if you want to. If someone wants to limit debate, they've got the option. Of just saying they call for the question. And once that's done, it's non-debatable. And, uh, on town meeting, when you're voting from the floor. It only requires, um. Seven people to agree to that.
seven people to agree to that. I don't know what the figure would be in a committee like ours, but I'm guessing probably one or two. I don't know. I think that's something that needs to be looked into, but calling the question is a non-debatable issue regardless.
So it probably shall is the word to use there.
I'm guessing that that's probably correct.
Yeah.
Dana?
We already said in our number five that all motions must require a majority of the members, so that's four. So any other motion, regardless of what it's called, would require affirmative votes, four affirmative votes. But to Sherman's point, if you're motioning to close, if you make a motion to close debate, you can do that, I think, with a motion and a second, and then a vote. Or you could call the question as the chair. And the chair can call the question, I think, at any time, which would actually do what Jim is saying and close the debate by calling the question. That means that there's no further.
Yeah, but there is something that's non-debatable in there, and I as Jim just mentioned. And I think calling for a question, calling for a vote is one of those.
And a member.
Home is not, is not mentioned in number six.
Jim?
Any member is authorized to call the question whenever they feel they want to.
And it's not debatable.
Right.
That's not in our rules that we're looking to adopt.
Well, that's, that's the Roberts rules.
But as I understand, as I understand it, we're not governed by Roberts rules. Or have never been. I may be wrong.
Well.
Yes and no.
That's the rationale for these procedures, if I'm not, if I'm not misunderstanding.
That's, that's correct. This goes back a few meetings when there was questions on public participation and member voting. And it came up that, about the order that we operate under, and we determined that we don't operate under Roberts rules of order, which is why I went and found these, so we could adopt a set of rules.
I think that in your document, that needs to be stated right up in the front end, because people off the street might be coming into a meeting and wondering what's going on as you proceed through a particular item.
What I, what I intended to do is, once these were adopted, is post, especially the public participation part, at the table before they come in. So people had questions, if people had, and we were coming to a hearing, then our rules and expectation for public participation would be posted before they come in.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to indicate, I think, at the end, rather than the beginning, that the body shall be the planning commission shall be governed by these rules of procedure and not Roberts rules of procedure. And put it as a last paragraph. So at least there's some notice.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we want to do with this last line in number six?
How would we, what would we prefer the procedure to be? How would we like it to?
That's a good question, Sherman.
Because it sounds like we can do it any way we want.
Yeah, it does. We could. I mean, if we did put shall instead of will there, we're not specifying that it's non-debatable. We're not specifying it doesn't require a vote. Is that what we want?
Honestly, Barbara, I don't think shallow will makes a darn bit of difference in that particular phrase.
Okay. What about the question?
Talking about motions, and you already defined what a motion needs to pass. So putting shallow will is irrelevant.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yep, so let's just move on, okay?
We don't want to be more specific than this. Okay, okay, I'm fine with that.
At the top of the next page, paragraph one, under agenda, I think it should, after the word agenda in the first sentence, should be a period and not a comma.
Yep, okay. Keep going, Norm.
Okay, in paragraph three. I think, again, it's a muster shall. I always prefer shall. That's the only question. We don't need to go through it. Either you like shall or you like must, and we can just move on.
There's synonyms.
No, legally, they're not.
Oh, legally.
And that, you know. They're not.
Norman, in paragraph three, you've got shall. I don't, oh, I see must.
I'm sorry?
I saw the shals, I didn't see the must, but I just caught it, so.
Maybe for consistency, we'll do all shals?
It's best to be consistent.
Sound reasonable?
Yep, reasonable.
Okay, we shall do that. Anything else, Norm?
Well, paragraph four, under meetings, concerned me. The last sentence. If a quorum or more of the body attend a meeting without being physically present at a designated meeting location, the agenda shall designate at least one physical location where a member of the public can attend and participate in the meeting. At least one member of the body or at least one staff or delegate of the body shall be present at such designated meeting location. To me, that wasn't very clear. As I just read it, it's clearer, so.
Yeah, and I think it's open law, open meeting law, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's taken right from the statute, yep.
Right. And as I read it aloud, it made more sense than when I read it to myself. On the next page. I think paragraphs three and four are be reversed under public participation. Just seems that makes more sense.
Okay. So four will become three, and three becomes four.
And the paragraph six, second sentence, second line, says neither members of the body nor members of the public shall delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the meeting. And I just thought decorum was a better word, but.
Everybody okay with that one?
Yep.
Okay. You got your list, Norm?
No, I had one more.
Oh.
This, in paragraph six, it does not provide for the removal of a a person who is disrupting the meetings. And I didn't prepare any language on that. But I think it's something we ought to consider. I was at one recently in Mendon where they had to call the police.
Okay. I think my suggestion here would be that maybe we need town, the town attorney, to give us some advice on language here. I guess, you know, I throw that out. And then, do we need to include such language in these rules right now? Or can we go ahead with what we have and add this at a later time?
I wouldn't let it prevent adoption, as long as we understand we can amend these.
Oh, yeah.
All right, now. I had one other thought that came to me that's not written down here. And I mentioned it to Barbara today in an email, because I forgot, and I apologize. If someone is late to the meeting, and one of the alternates is participating, it seems to me that we ought to have some procedure for when the alternate is replaced by the member. And it also seemed to me.
Or we go by the language that's in here right now. But yeah, thank you for bringing this up.
My thought.
I think we should discuss this, you know, is, is the count of regulars and alternates set at the beginning of the meeting, and that's it for the meeting? Or should we, we've tried to be flexible with this in the past. It's not the easiest to keep track of. People, you know, coming in, and especially like during the middle of some debate. But whatever, whatever the group wants to do here. I think you're right, Norm, that that what we added, what I added there, we should run it by the group and just how strict we want to be with that.
Well, my my concern is, we had a mix-up at one point, you know, with Jim, when he was voting and when he wasn't. And if something, it seems to me if one of the members comes in and one of the two alternates is you know, filling in, then at least the alternates, at least the business before the meeting at the point, before we move to the next agenda item, the alternate should stay. You know, maybe something like the alternate shall continue. I had some thought on it just a second. The alternate should not be replaced until the business pending before the commission at that time is completed. Just so there's some guidance and we know and nobody, it doesn't leave us open for some criticism that somebody voted who shouldn't have voted, or we get into unfortunate spat about it, that would clarify it that way.
Okay.
I have a.
Just a minute, Sherman. Norm, would you mind just jotting down some language of what you just said? Just in case we want to go that route. Sherman?
Yeah, I it seemed to me it would be easier for us to say that at the beginning of the meeting, the chair will identify the voting members, and that will remain throughout the meeting or something to that effect.
Yeah.
So you're advocating not to change the language as it is in three? That, that, whatever the breakdown at the beginning of the meeting is, it remains throughout the meeting?
Yes, I don't, I don't read that in three, though. But, but yes, I would, I think I would be comfortable with it saying that, yes.
So I don't, these rules don't really address alternates. There was nothing in there written about it because it's meant for like select boards, things like that, that wouldn't have an alternate. So this, I, I, I agree that probably needs to be something there to make it easier for everybody to understand. And I think what Norm was saying was, if you're in a discussion on something that needs to be voted on, and an alternate's already there, and then, like tonight, Dana came in in the middle of the conversation, he wouldn't vote on what was being discussed. And then at the end of that discussion, he becomes the primary and the alternate goes back to an alternate.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling. Otherwise, if somebody's five minutes late, they're frozen for a meet, out of a meeting, or 10 minutes late. Meetings go for an hour and a half. You know, it's going to provide a hardship for Dana, who often comes from Middlebury. And I don't think we need to be that strict. If Sherman's view carries, that's what it is, and that's okay, I mean.
And, and, you know, just to make it clear, we're just talking about voting. I mean, anybody can discuss any business that comes before us at any point. So we're just talking about voting here.
Yes, that's correct. But it, you know, that's my feeling, is that the vote ought to go back to the member and not the alternate. But if the board feels differently, that's okay too.
So may I ask a question? Is there, is there, do any problems arise if we have four things that are voted on and three are voted on by by, with an alternate and one is voted on without that, that it's not all the same seven people who vote? Is there, is there a problem with that? At all? I'm not, I'm not aware of one, so I'm really asking the question.
I don't know.
Maybe, Barbara, when you speak to the town attorney, you can raise that question as well. They do, I think they represent more than one town, they may be more familiar with it.
Right, right. Any other comments?
I have one, Barbara. School boards, and we do have to follow Roberts rules of order. With school boards, if a member comes in, members sometimes come in and members sometimes leave. So the members that you have at the end of a meeting may not be the same members that you have at the beginning of a meeting. And therefore, the people who would have voted for something that happens later in the meeting will be different from those voting earlier in the meeting. And there is no issue with that. But that is all Roberts rules. So my, my logic is applying to how Roberts rules would would work. So I, I, I think the answer to the Sherman's question is, it doesn't matter as long as you have duly authorized members voting at that time. My preference too would be for the people who are present for a question when it comes up and have the background from that to be able to participate. If there's no debate, if the meeting opens and you've done the pledge of allegiance, you've done introductions, and you've had public comment, and you don't even start the first order of business, which requires action, at that point in time, you would identify the voting members at the beginning of the action, and that would be a board chair responsibility.
Right, which can get a little cumbersome and confusing for a chair.
And because of what Dana just brought up, we also need to address, address members leaving before the end of the meeting. So my point, Barbara, if you would like, you can delegate that responsibility to the vice chair. As long as he's there at the beginning of the meeting.
What are we delegating? What are you self-delegating?
No, I was, I was saying that the chair, if the chair was overburdened by keeping track of who was voting, that that could be delegated to the vice chair to keep track of. And as long as, as long as the vice chair arrives at the beginning of the meeting.
I think, isn't it pretty straightforward that there's only going to be either? There's only going to be one of, one of two alternates. And I just think that when that business is done and he's voted, we ought to switch back to the regular members. Isn't that what we're kind of talking about doing? I know, I don't, I don't know that it's that hard with just two alternates. I can't imagine that we would not all kind of understand that if Dana was 10 minutes late, that when he started new business, that Norm might step back and Dana would then vote. It seems pretty easy to, I don't know.
That's what, that's what intuitively, I think, I've always thought. But it's, it's not clear here, and as long as we're, and we did have one small mix-up about it, so I just thought we might want to clarify it.
Your language of the next agenda item seems to make sense. When the next agenda item comes up, it goes back to the primary voter, or the primary member that showed up.
Have you worked up that language yet, Norm?
No, I, I need to do it. Can I wait till next meeting? Or you want me to do it now?
I guess we could wait. Howard and Mary Beth, you comfortable with what the direction we're going? Number three? Okay, so we're almost done with this. Yes, Sherman?
I I still have a question. Should we should we also include? If someone leaves before the meeting, before the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Just add it to whatever we're saying.
You're talking about number three, and I'm not sure where we're at. Okay, so number three under organization. I'm going to put. Just for my notes, late arrival. Early departure, and I'll get some language.
Okay.
Why is there? I don't see the problem with early departure. I mean, that speaks for itself. It seems to me.
Well, if we have the language as it's worded right now. We wouldn't have the flexibility of of adding or subtracting someone. We've got. It says which members, regular and alternate, are voting members for that meeting. So we're we're just trying to clarify that for both ends of the meeting.
Wait, wait a minute.
It's pretty clear on that.
Are we in paragraph three? You're talking about paragraph three under organization.
Yeah, the way, yeah, the the last line of paragraph three, Norm. The way it reads to me right now is that we set who are voting members at the beginning of the meeting. And set is the operative word there. So we're trying to give some flexibility to that.
I don't see. In the copy I have, we're talking about paragraph three C under organization. I don't see a word set. In the copy I'm looking at.
Well, okay, I'm paraphrasing it. The chair will announce which members are voting members for that meeting. So it sounds like it means the entire meeting.
Okay, later tomorrow. Okay, I got it. Later later rival, early departure language help. Work on. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And. I can check with the town attorney about removal from office. That might take a while. We might want to just put that on.
Removal from meeting, not from office.
From, right. But I'll see what their schedule is. Maybe we'll have something in three weeks, maybe not. And we'll decide whether we want to go ahead with what we've been deciding on these rules. Next time.
I'll I'll send something to you before that. I may I may not be here and I leave the next morning for a weekend. For four days, so. But I'll get it to you.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item under old business. Which is compiling a list of questions for Vermont Lake Cities and Towns. On ordinances and I. Just to get going on this, I sent out a list of the existing ordinances in town. To see if. There are any in there that we want to review. While we're going through this ordinance process. And then I, it's part of that, there's a list of I I think all of the new ordinances we've been talking about. Except for the last one, the top 10 ordinances in other towns. That was just something I don't think we'll get from BLCT, but I can try again. So of the current ordinances. Are there any in here that you think are? Need updating or unworkable? Any in here that we should go to the select board and say, we want to. We want to review these.
I I Barbara, I think. One of the things that might be helpful if we do right up front. Is find out if the select board has any priority. Ordinances that they would like to get done first. Because we conceivably could, if we didn't do that, and they had something. In mind, you know. We could be working against. Particularity here by. Not doing that.
Yep. That's a good point.
There there is one that I get calls on absolutely more than any other, and that is noise. So I think I think VLCT has a model policy on, I think it's called objectionable noise. Yep. So that that topic more than any besides besides building permits. Noise is the number one thing I get called about.
I'm not surprised.
And from all different sources, I mean, not just gunfire.
Oh, yeah. Oh, vehicles. Dogs, cars, cars, fireworks, guns, you name it, everything.
Hey. Well, can easily go to the select board and say and ask if they would like. That looked at revised.
Where is that? I don't see.
We don't, we don't have a noise ordinance.
Yes, that's correct.
That is the one that's most requested. Like when people call, this is like, oh, you don't have one? Are they looking at doing one? Not right now. But that is the one that is the one that I get asked about the most that we do not have.
Not even it's not even, there's not even anything in the public nuisance ordinance about.
Nope, nope, that that apply that applies to like structures and things like that. It does not doesn't address noise. There is a. There's something in the state statute or something about like. Quiet peace time is like 10 P M. Or something like that. There's something some language about that already there, but there's. It's not really in the the there's nothing real enforcement, but you know, with any of the ordinances that we were looking at. You know, we talked about, you know, zoning and things like that. It all is going to come back to. We can do all of the rules, all the ordinances, it's going to, all of it's going to come back to. What's the enforcement? That's the crux of going to be any of these.
Right. And we don't even have anything about the noise during a certain time of day. You know, after a certain hour.
We have no rules at all.
So, yeah, the the Abby from VLCT said there is a criminal statute. In state code. That expressly prohibits noise in the nighttime. After sunset before sunrise. That's shooting guns only.
Yeah, I think they have one on object. I think it's called objectionable noise. I might even have a copy of my desk. I I don't have my ordinance. Hat on right now, but it's it's there's something about it there, but I think. That would probably be the the if we're going to look at a new one, that'd be the one to start with.
Yeah, and maybe just follow up with Abby from VLCT. Excuse me. If there are any other applications other than shooting guns. Or any other examples out there? Yeah, Norm.
Well. That could cover or noise ordinance could cover a few of these other things, for instance. Obviously, guns and shooting ranges, but. Airstrips. Helipads. That kind of thing. Would we be able to? Talk about those things in our noise ordinance? I don't know.
I think there was explicitly said that noise could be not you could not be used. For any restrict for. For any restrictions that we put on aircraft.
Okay.
That was in the transportation board letter, yes.
Right.
Oh, that's right. That's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Sherman.
Abby from VLCT says municipalities may adopt. Noise ordinances pursuant to the section of state statute. We do have an older version of a model noise ordinance that would need to be reviewed to confirm it complies with current state law. So we could ask for that right there.
Yep.
Barbara?
Yeah. Go ahead.
When I was speaking, this is Dana, when I was speaking to the consultant that I engaged to talk about the. Airstrips and helipads. His suggestion was one of the most salient ones that I took away from that was that. You identify. Noise in a separate ordinance, there were that therefore it can't be. Targeted towards anything that would be airstrip or. FAA related, because you can't do that. But you can set the time about noise ordinances, and then the helipads would have to comply with that. So that was a great suggestion, and that's the route that I would take and not mention anything. In helipad. The helipad ordinance about noise. That allows you to get noise.
And that would be. That would be according to time of day and maybe a decibel level.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Norm?
Dana, did the conversation include landing strips?
Yep.
For airplanes as well as helipads?
Yes.
Okay.
But that was that was just that was just a suggestion to include it. In a different ordinance rather than trying to include it in a helipad. Airstrip ordinance, because you could then regulate the time of operations for those private.
So is this suggestion that we should not? Attempt. To. Have a private helipad, private landing strip and helipad. Ordinance? Was that your? No.
It was. Include a noise. Restriction in the helipad ordinance.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Separately, because that way it's not targeting any particular. Arena. And that that should be omitted from any helipad. But you could make reference to the time of day that would. Correspond with a noise ordinance so that the operations would be during. Times that it would not be a disturbance. Or less of a disturbance.
Yeah, so I'm I'm wondering, you know, what? What are we trying to resolve with a helipad or small airstrip ordinance? Is it? Is it any traffic, any air traffic going into a residential area? Or is it more along the lines of of new essences? Of, you know, happening. You know, wrong times of the day.
I I think clearly there's an issue of safety. In these things. As well as well as. You know. Having them in residential areas. I mean, we have a lot of open land, certainly. You know. It's going to be if it is limited or somehow. Restricted. Which it would have to be anyway, at least the landing strips to large parcels. You know, that that makes more sense. Helipads. I don't think people want them next door to, you know, it's still would seem that's the larger areas of more open land. You don't want that in a residential area.
Right, right, right. We always come up against. Though in in writing something like this, we'd have to delineate. You know, the the measurements of what we're concerned about, you know, it's. You know, the distance to a property line or to another residence or something like that. And in doing that, we get into like zoning territory.
There's no question.
Or what what would look like zoning?
Well, look.
Yeah.
If we look at it from the reverse, we regulate this. In a sense, and then some of these open areas suddenly become. Residential areas. Can you build? In effect, build out. A landing strip. By development. Can you crowd it out by development? Since we have no zoning. That might be a possibility. Or a helipad that's in a big field now. But if the, you know. Somebody buys part of the land, they start a subdivision, we approve it. You know, does that crowd out? The strip with a helipad. I mean, it's it's going to be tricky.
Yeah.
But it's doable, I believe.
Thinking we're probably going to need the town attorney to help us with this, too. I think when we we've mentioned that before. In the past. Do you what about some of the other ideas that Andy brought forward? The. Some sort of ordinance on fill limits. On properties, people bringing in Phil. And I believe Andy also mentioned a paramilitary. Kind of regulations. Which VLCT says there, you know, there's nothing like that in the state. But there's nothing stopping a municipality from working with their town attorney on that. Do we want to pursue those two as well right now or wait for Andy Andy's input? Next time?
I think we need to spend a fair amount of time weighing. How we do this and which of the possibilities and prioritize them. And I think Jim Hall was correct that we need before we do anything. In terms of going forward, we need to find out where the select board is. If they have any priorities. But I think when we approach them, I mean, the two to me. That seem. Most essential. Are the paramilitary and the shooting range. And I assume that's one ordinance. And the helipads, private landing strips. Only because there aren't any and we can get ahead of the game and trying to catch up. But I don't think we should. Undertake any of that. I think investigate it. I think talking to the town attorney makes sense. But I think Jim. I mean, for for our own well being. As well as protocol, Jim is correct, we ought to ask them. You know, if they have any objection to us moving forward on that.
Yep.
Think there is, there is one helipad, though, at Velco, isn't it?
Oh, that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And when that that brings up a question, and I mean, whether we can even regulate commercial helipads.
I almost we we need to know, have at least some understanding of FAA rules and guidelines, because whatever we. I don't, I I'm not, I have trouble figuring out how you attack that, but whatever we do certainly has to be. Consistent with FAA. Rules or where helipads are, I don't, I mean.
I I know, we've gone around. I mean, we we asked John Zuccconi to talk to us, the the person who wrote that letter that started all this. And, you know, he just said, well, you know, go just go do it. And I think he said that because there aren't many ordinances or bylaws. Anywhere in the state about this. So he didn't really have anything to refer us to. And and then we tried to talk to the FAA and.
I know.
And transportation in the local airport, and they don't, they don't want to touch that because. It's really a municipal concern, and they don't want to get involved in that way. So we keep kind of running into dead ends here.
I don't know, you know, somebody, after I spoke with Charlie Rockwell. At Barbara's suggestion. Charlie had somebody from the airport call me and said he would help, but he didn't know how. As I recall. But we might have. Charlie's a pilot, private pilot. And, you know, and a member of the select board in town of Rupert. So he would understand our. Some of our. So he would understand our, some of our musings. But it's tricky. Sherman is right. I mean, you've got FAA and that kind of thing.
Right, right.
But, but landing, private landing strips, I don't think they regulate. I, I don't know. We need, we need, we need our town attorney to look into the matter of regulating private landing strips and how, if at all, they are impacted by the FAA or by local airports. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned for the safety of the people. Somebody could come in, do they need a permit, for instance, to put in a private landing strip on the Gallopo Farm or the Donardo Farm?
Not now.
Does it come under Act 250? How does it fit into our town plan?
And is the length of the, the landing strip adequate for the aircraft that's being planned to, I mean, to go there?
Yeah.
I, the only, the only thing that I have to say is, is, as, as we had a guy from the state talk with us and, and as all this come around, nobody really seems what direction to go. I just feel we need to be careful how much money we spend on an attorney when we're going to find out the same thing we know right now. There is little or no, nothing that we can do other than making up some sort of document ourselves. I mean, the guy from the state was pretty clear that that was, that there was no statute, that there was nothing the state could do about it. So do we spend money to find that answer? I just think we need to be, we've, we've spoken about talking to council about five times tonight. And it just seems really a lot of money to spend on answers that we maybe can figure out some of them ourselves.
One thing that was in his letter is that we could do some of this, it wouldn't have any teeth at all, but we could use the town plan the next time we revise it to address some of these issues. Again, it's, it's, it's more aspirational than anything, you know, we would, you know, the language for airstrips would be, you know, you know, the, the town does not support strips in residential neighborhoods that are going to disturb, you know, neighbors or something like that. Or be too close to the property lines. I mean, that, that was something that other towns do. They use the town plan for what that's worth. You know, we could, we could go that route. I could ask the select board that too, if they want us to go that route. If they want us to sit down with the town, if they want us to spend the money, to sit down with the town attorney.
That seems pretty logical to me. And then if they, then at the, if that point, if at some point we hear of another town that, I mean, he went to every, this letter went out to every town.
Yes.
There's got to be other towns thinking about it. Maybe somebody will come up with a real logical ordinance that we can kind of, we can kind of share with them.
What about, so for the airstrip and the shooting range type discussion, what if we just had a safety ordinance with those as pieces? So if you separate from noise, but focus on just anything that you do that could impact your neighbor's safety, so whether that's kicking off an airplane or shooting guns or, you know, dogs or what, you know, whatever, and then just have setbacks identified for each area there? So, and now, or maybe another town has something like that, a more general safety ordinance?
Yeah, the, the VLCT said, you know, there are provisions for miscellaneous regulatory powers for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, welfare and convenience. A town, a city incorporated village will have the following powers. Firearms and the ability to define what constitutes the public nuisance. And to provide procedures and take action for its abatement or removal as the public health, safety or welfare may require. So, yeah, I'll be able to lump stuff together under that.
So then we just have the noise ordinance and the safety ordinance and most of what we've been talking about would be in one of those two categories?
Right. Oddly enough, our stormwater ordinance is under here as a nuisance. Because they wanted to go the ordinance route. And this was the best fit. So, yeah. Might be a good discussion item with the town attorney too, how much we could lump in. Okay, so I've got some questions for the select board. And if you don't mind, I'd like to add a couple of things that, this is not near future, but in our existing ordinances, our flood, our flood protection measures and are really, are quite out of date. We, we did, Bill, we did find the, the most recent version and, and put that on the website and get that in the records. But that still goes back to 2008 and there's been a lot of data and new information since then about flood hazards. And then there's also, we, we talk about every once in a while, our subdivision ordinance. And, you know, just cleaning up some of the language with that. So I was just thinking, I was just, just mentioned that, you know, down the road, we'd like to tackle those things, if that's okay? Norm, what's so funny?
Well, it's always been, the sub, it seems to me the subdivision regulations must have come down from someplace. And we're not generated, and Howard, you may know more than, than I about it, that they weren't generated necessarily locally because they have the word zoning in them. And it just, it just seems an acronym, you know, inconsistent.
Get your red pen, Norm, and start marking it up.
What? Well, there's.
Get your, get your, get your big red pen out and start marking it up.
You can't afford my, you can't afford my rate. Well, I, I, I don't feel, you know, the, the references to zoning are, you know, occasional. But some of the other things in there are, I think obsolete, and it might be good to take a look at it. But we will certainly need counsel to do that. And I wouldn't do it without the select boards.
Right, right. And, and there's absolutely, there's really nothing in there about boundary line adjustments, except the language that says they're not subdivisions.
Yeah, that was, I was going to bring that up, is that we should add a, a section for that to define that process, that, that and removing some of the things in the requirements that we have always waived.
True, true.
That's a good point.
And another thing about the boundary line adjustments, we're seeing a lot of those because we're so, the town is pretty well built out. I mean, there's not going to be that many more subdivisions. Maybe the Thomas property, properties, but there's really not going to be too much and it's going to be adjusting lines, I think.
Well, Barbara, there's still a lot of open land. When I ride through town and it's just, and it's beautiful, you know, but there's still a lot of open land off of Grove Street and off of McKinley and off of Cedar.
Yeah.
And, and off of Creek Road. And off of, I forget, I always get them mixed up. There's an awful lot, I, I wouldn't say that necessarily.
Yeah, okay, okay. I stand corrected and it's, a, a lot of it's farmland. It's not used. I know.
A lot of that farmland is in the flood plain.
Yep.
Certainly.
Yep.
Parts, parts of those parcels are, yep, a lot of them.
You need to have a reason for subdivision and the businesses in this area, we've been, we've been getting less and less business and if someone, if GE left town, for instance, I mean, we'd have a big hole. Right now, there's not that many, you know, jobs bringing people into the area because they're building homes.
Right.
Not like it was, but 15, 20 years ago, Jerry, there was a lot of that building. It's, it's slowed up quite a bit.
Right. So, yeah, so we may become a bedroom, we may continue to be a bedroom community and need subdivisions for that.
But, but the ordinance needs a lot of, could use a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be done.
Yeah, I know, that, that, that could take us like a good year to weed through that. Okay, so I'll mention those to select board. Yes, Sherman?
I, I had one other thing I, I was concerned about in ordinance is, and it, it's regarding yard sales and how, when does a yard sale become a commercial operation? If it's, if it's done every week or for three weeks or if, just, I, I don't know if there's anything, I, I didn't, I couldn't find anything in the peddler's ordinance that addressed that, but it's just.
Actually, the, the aggressive panhandling one has been, oh, okay, there's still a peddler's ordinance, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see the aggressive panel.
Yes, two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
The panhandling one was, was taken off the books.
Yes.
Yep.
But the vendor peddler one is like if someone, like a food truck is a, is a great example, tho- those kinds of operations.
Right.
I think, I think Pittsburgh has a lawn sale ordinance or when people become vendors rather than just weekend. I'm pretty sure they have one in Pittsburgh.
Are we noticing this as a problem in Rutland Town?
I, I've seen it, one situation where it could be potentially a problem.
Okay. So.
Why, why is?
Norm?
Yeah, why is that any more of a problem than people operating businesses from their homes such as auto repair, truck repair, certain retail, retailers? That kind of thing?
Well, yeah, I think in developing the ordinance, we'd have to deal with scale.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, profits or something.
It, it seems not, not as important as some of the other stuff we've spoken about. It's just something that I, I had on my list.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to wrap this up, but, but connect it to something that's going on in town right now that Bill and, and the select board chair have been receiving complaints about. So if we could move down to announcements, there is an operation, looks like a sand pit, something industrial like off Cedar Avenue, pretty close to the corner of Cedar and North Grove.
On that corner?
Not right on the corner, no. It looks like they're accessing the property and where all the trucks, the neighbors are complaining about the truck traffic primarily. They're using an access.
Across Jerry's, old Jerry's Nissan, is that right? No, no, it's the other end.
This is on Cedar Avenue and it's, it's, it's really close to North Grove Street.
I can speak to this.
Yeah.
That's a property that Patrick and Kristen McGlaughlin own, it's eight acres or so. They're going to be building a house up there, up on the top of that hill. And I'm not sure what, that they had some environmental stuff that they had to do first, but I just gave them today, I, I, I got a 911 number for them coming off from Cedar Avenue. They're, they're going to be building a home up there.
What is it?
They must be taking a bunch of fill up in there to address those, address the environmental issues, maybe. They may be, you know, there's all sorts of things, retention type areas that you have to put sand in and now.
Because they, they have a lot of vehicles up there, vehicles stored up there over many, many years, and I'm not sure what the problem is, but.
But it's going to be for future residents.
Future residents, yes, yes.
Okay, so.
To be built. Soon as they can get it, get going, it's, it's going to happen this year, you know, within a year.
Is that close to the Girdens property that's on that side of my way out?
It's, it's.
It's, it's, in fact, it was part of George Girdens property. He owned on both sides of North Grove Street. He had like an 80 acre parcel. And that's, that's the parcel.
Right in that area.
Yeah, and, and they're going to, their driveway is going to come off from Cedar Avenue.
Hey, Bill, can you show this on a map? I'm, I'm lost because I live right up there and I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about. You're talking about right across from Gallopos?
You know where the farm stand is?
Across from Gallopos, most east.
Yeah, it's just a little bit more east than the farm stand, the Gallopo farm stand.
But we're talking about on the north side of Cedar.
On the north side of Cedar.
Yes, it's behind the, there's a, a lawn service that's on, on Grove Street. And if you, if you drive by it, it's behind the lawn service, but the entrance is on, on Cedar. I got it. I know what you're talking about now, yep. Thanks, Bill.
Oh, Bill's putting up a map.
Yeah, so you're talking about that angle right down in the lower corner of Cedar and North Grove.
That's the angle that's all by the lawn service.
Little, right, right around there.
House is going to be built right up on, on the high spot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Mary, Mary drove by it, but I'm not, I'm not sure where it is. I, I don't, I don't know where, where it is.
Oh, you can see it. You can see all the trucks and the, and the fill that they're bringing in. You can see it clearly, driving either direction on Cedar Avenue.
It's not far, Bill, from where your cursor.
A little to the left, Bill.
Like right here?
Down a little.
Down a little in the open area.
Yep.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there.
You know, and I wonder if people had concerns because McGlaughlin has that pit in Pittsburgh, maybe he's hauling fill from there. You know, and they see the trucks.
Could be. I just gave him a 911 number today that they, they needed for Comcast.
I didn't, I didn't take, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I saw it. I didn't take a good look, but I was under the impression that, that soil was being removed.
That's what I've heard too, is that it's not going in, it's coming out.
That's what I thought. And I, I couldn't.
I, i- is it commercial or are they leveling a lot?
Don't know.
I guess is the question.
They're working on a site. I, I don't know what it, what it is, but they're working at the site, I think, where the home is going to go.
Well, I mean, all we have is informational building permit and we do not have that from them, so.
So it's not a subdivision because they already own the land, right, Bill?
I, 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 I really have very little information on it. Howard, Howard just gave me more information than I knew about it, so I, I really don't know. Mary got a little information of the day. I got a little information of the day, so there's really not a lot we have yet at this point.
So all they really need is a building.
It's going to be a dwelling, yeah.
Barbara, it's Dana.
Yeah.
So what question are we trying to answer and what jurisdiction do we have over whatever the question is that we're trying to answer?
Well, Mary, the chair of the select board, has notified Act 250 that there might be an issue here. And Act 250 keeps asking us, well, what, where is this exactly? And, and I'm not quite sure, you know.
Well, evidently, evidently we have a number now.
Yeah.
79.
Wouldn't it have been easier to ask the property owner?
Yeah.
And if they didn't call, Act 250, couldn't they have just called the property owner and asked them what they were doing?
I, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know. Howard, if you could.
Sounds like that's where it's headed.
If you could get me that parcel number, just so we could get that to Act 250, but also it sounds like we probably should tell Mary that we think this is just for residential purposes.
Yes. Residential dwelling, yep.
Is it in the town plan? It's in a residential, an area designated residential?
Um, yes, it's either.
Probably, their houses.
I mean, at, at this point, why does Act 250 have to know anything if it's a dwelling?
Oh, yeah, it's McGlaughlin's. There, well, that's the last tax map we have is right there. It shows McGlaughlin's.
Where, where's your curse? Can you?
Right here.
Yeah. Right, right up to the corner, huh?
Yep.
And he also owns property right along Route 7.
Right there.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But that's their plan, like.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think the reason Act two fifty, because it would superficially appear to be a commercial operation.
But it's not. So what happens is if you're building.
We don't, we don't know that.
Oh, hell can break loose with Act two fifty. I just think that they have no business. It's a dwelling in Rutland Town. With no zoning.
We, we don't know that at this point.
Well, a simple call to the homeowner would have solved it though, you think, Norm?
Quite, maybe, of, of course, yeah, but at this.
These kind of things just put me over the top. I mean, it, it's, it's, and we don't have any jurisdiction over it anyway, none.
Why ask the question, Jerry?
Exactly.
But we don't have any jurisdiction, we don't have any.
And I think we, the planning commission was pulled into this because the select board is trying to. Figure out what to do because they're getting these complaints from neighbors. So, I will go back.
The complaints based on though, I mean, I, 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 actually, I don't wanna ask, don't it?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, Norm. I agree, Dana, rather, it's.
Well, it's quite, there's quite a pile of fill up there. May- maybe they think they're gonna start. Opening up a boral pit, uh, or something of that nature, but, but that's not the case.
They're, they're, yeah, they're, they're moving a lot of soil. You can see, you see the tracks. Um, for s- for some reason. Um, Norm?
I understand Jerry's concern, but at this point, we don't have an application for a building permit. For our, to build a house. Uh, we know there's a lot of activity and it appears by a commercial concern of something going on. So, if it's not, if we have no jurisdiction because we, there's nothing before us. I can understand why somebody wonders if Act two fifty is involved or something's going on. Um, but the first, perhaps, you know, Bill Sweets should call and say we've had some complaints. You know, uh, please tell us what's going on so we know, you know, so we can answer.
I'll tag Patrick McGlaughlin and he'll tell you what it is, it's.
I'm sorry.
I, I had a call from Kirsten uh, McGlaughlin. A week or week and a half ago and she, and she said, we, we, we would like to get a nine-one-one number. Their number was originally gonna come off from North Grove Street, but they said, we're gonna access our home. From Cedar Avenue, so we need, we need a number off from Cedar Avenue. I've done that, I've notified the post office, nine-one-one, and it's uh, it's, it's for a home.
I think a simple call to Mary and it drops. It's, it's a home, doesn't need to go to Act two fifty. Just, she needs to just understand there's a home being built there. It's no different than if, if any one of us is gonna build a home somewhere else in Rutland Town.
And, and so we need a building permit, is that the only thing that's missing? I mean, that would be a, so, uh, let's take care of. Two shots with the same, same stone and uh. Make sure that we, if there's a building permit that's required, that we just ask for that at the same time and. Move the matter forward, like Jerry said.
Yep, yep. Bill, uh. Can we get you to do that, to contact McGlaughlin's?
Uh, I, I can, it's probably not gonna be until Tuesday, but.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. In the meantime, I, I will, um, I will be in touch with Mary too about what, what we know as a group here. What's going on.
Yep.
And if she wants to pursue. Anything else regards, in regards to the neighbors or what the trucks are actually, are coming in or going out, I mean, that would be up. She can always refer back to us, but.
Yep.
I'll just tell her what we know at this point. And if you would contact them and, and, and just remind them they need a building permit.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can do that and um, I'll, I'll get with Howard for the contact information, but. Yep, but it'll, it'll, it's almost certainly gonna be next week, so.
I, I can do that tomorrow, if you want, Bill.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be good, yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm in town fair all day tomorrow, so.
I'll do that.
How's it been?
It's actually nice. I, 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 well, I've been doing it remotely, but I, I, I'm in the, the, what their sessions they have all day tomorrow, I'm taking. I'm, I'm set up for all of them tomorrow, so, um, but no, it's nice actually remote and, and it's, it's good. And you can go back and. Review them, so I can go back and re, redo all the ones that uh, any of them, even if you didn't attend them, you can go back and, and watch them, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's the beauty of those kind of conferences.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else in announcements? Uh, Mary Beth, did, did you have an update on some of the things that you've been doing with the conservation world?
Yeah, yeah, um, so, one thing that I was thinking about, doesn't have to be right away, but soon. Um, I was thinking about going or asking to come back to the select board. And just closing the loop on the conservation commission, uh, just asking, would they like us to? Move forward and put on the ballot, or should we just stop, you know, at this point? Um, so maybe. Not this upcoming select board meeting, but the following, the twenty-sixth. Um, I would just go with Barbara or ask to be on the agenda or whatever as part of the planning commission update.
Does anybody have an issue with that? Just getting a, a definitive answer whether they wanna put this on the ballot in March?
Do you have the signatures to put it on the ballot?
Uh, they can put it on the ballot.
Well, that would be, right, it would be, do they wanna move forward or not? And then we would still need to get. The signatures to put it on the ballot.
They can't just put something on? I think they, they can. We'll, we'll, we'll check that. I think they can automatically put things on.
Okay, I didn't.
It's like, it's not a rush, but it just would be nice to just know either way, you know, so we can just stop talking about it, I guess, it's not a thing. Um. So that's one piece. Um, well, so, and in the rules of procedure. Um, you know, talks about having the board. Or the com- planning commission approve it. Do you think we need to vote again on it, or we already voted to begin with to go talk to them with what we had? I don't know.
It was one of those, those funky votes with the alternates and regulars, uh, but it was, it was overwhelming. I mean, overwhelmingly uh, positive to, to ask them. Uh. I don't think we need another motion. Especially if there's a consensus that. We just want to get this clarified. I'll take that as a consensus. Okay.
Barbara, just following up on Mary Beth's suggestion about following rules for procedure. Um. Where does it say? That the body. Will. Take action through. Uh, motion, and if we're giving somebody a task, that it needs to be. Uh, clearly directed, directing the chair or another member. It's in here someplace. I know we're not following it yet. Cause we haven't adopted it, but if that's the direction which we're heading, we should try to be as consistent as possible.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's like if you're acting as.
You're not acting as.
On behalf of the planning commission, then everyone needs to, I forgot how it was worded.
Yeah, it, it's here someplace and I'm, maybe it's under organization, I don't know.
I think he's right.
No single member of the body shall have authority to represent or act on behalf of the body unless by majority vote. The body, it's number four under organization. The body has delegated such authority for a specific matter to, at a duly noticed meeting. And such delegation is recorded in the meeting minutes. I think just for procedural purposes. If we asked you to do it once and, 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 and an action came back and we're not clear, then I would make a motion to clarify. The, uh, with the select board, uh, their intent with respect to our recommendation. About establishing a conservation commission.
Okay, is that a motion?
That is.
There are second.
I will second it.
Okay, Sherman, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question I have is, are we also gonna need motions? For the other things we talked about going to the select board here tonight?
Like for the ordinances?
I. I don't.
You're talking about the noise ordinances and you're gonna be discussing certain things with noise ordinances, and what's the difference between that and?
Not a whole lot, but that's more asking their advice on where we should be putting our priorities. Um, Dana and, and Norm, you're next.
I think Norman had a, had his hand up first, I'll defer to him.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I think my concern, I don't, when we, if Mary Beth is designated. To go to speak on behalf of the planning commission to the select board, I think there ought to be a motion. I think that's separate from. The discussions we've had where the chair goes uh, to the select board, uh, those were done by consensus. Um, and she speaks for us all the time. Uh, I know that, um, you know, some time ago, I was at a select board meeting and I spoke out of turn. And um, Jerry and I had a discussion about it and uh, I think. And what arose out of that, and I, I told Jerry I thought he was right. I, I probably should have not said anything, even though I thought I was being helpful. Um, but here, we're designating a member, and I think it's important that the record showed that she has been authorized to speak.
Okay, and, and I think, I think it's important to note that there's a difference. With that and the ordinance work, because that was an assignment directly from the select board. To look at past and, and, you know, maybe some future ordinances. Dana.
Chiming in on both of what you've said, the, I, I see the distinction as uh, one of. Asking, making a recommendation or asking for clarification for the select board to authorize something. That was, that's the case with you and Mary Beth going and representing the, the. The discussion or the, the consensus of the um, planning commission. Uh, the other is. Um, uh, giving information to the uh, select board, which is an update. Or giving them information on which they will take. Further action that is out of our jurisdiction. We're not making a recommendation. So I think to your point, Barbara, what we're bringing is just a list and they can decide what they want us to come back with.
Right, it's.
So, yeah.
It's part of a process.
Right, if we are, if we're taking something that we have spent time working on and we have voted on. Then that requires a vote for you to represent that, the will of the planning commission to the, to the select board. But if we're just giving them information, then that can be transmitted. Um. Fairly fluidly, I think.
Howard, does that alleviate your questions?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, yeah, I mean. I understand what you, you, you're talking about some things that, that we've already been discussing on, but. It's not like you're going to go in there and bring up something completely off the wall that we haven't discussed. That, that wouldn't be proper. I mean.
Right.
If, if, you know, if you're representing the board, but.
I try not to do that.
No, I, 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 I just brought it up because it's a kind of a fine line area where, where.
So Howard, if, if this may be helpful, if we were working on a, um, an ordinance. And we thought it was in final form, then we would vote to adopt that. And recommend that the chair present that to the select board for their action. But we're not doing that. We're just giving them a list and asking them to tell us what they want us to work on. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I think, are we all in accord, excuse me, may I speak, Barbara?
Yeah.
Yeah, are we all in accord that we need to vote to authorize Mary Beth uh, to go to the select board and ask if.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, that is a fact.
In a second.
In a second.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know that I identified anybody in my motion, so I would identify Mary Beth and Barbara to get clarification. So, for, uh, for Bill, just to clarify, I'll amend my um, motion to designate Mary Beth and Barbara. Cause I think I left the names out of the first motion.
Okay. And. Sherman, you're okay with that?
Yes, I second that, yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, we ready for the question on that one? All those in favor of having Mary Beth and myself go to the select board to get clarification? On whether a conservation commission item will be on the ballot in March? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, say nay. Okay. Mary Beth, did you have anything else?
A couple of things, so, so kind of along those lines for the, the trail. The other trail thing that I'm working on, like killing Santa, Rutland. And hopefully connecting through Northwood Park. I just wanted to give a quick update, not much is happening with that. That's gonna be a multi-year process, but, um. The, so Mendon's working on from the Valmont Trail through Mendon over to Almost Meadow Lake Drive. Um, but I'm part of a group, Mike Rowe and, um. Some Rutland Town residents and um, Shelley Lutz, who's really involved with the. Uh, Pine Hill Park, so she's interested in getting to Pine Hill Park, um. We are considering, well, we're planning to talk to the city about going through the watershed property. Which is in Rutland Town, but owned by the city.
Right.
Um, and they asked if I would be part of that with Shelley Lutz, who works with the Rutland City Parks Department a lot. Um, because the group identified that as the most logical location, so. Um, we went out with Mike Rowe, he is kind of involved in that, so it's kind of a gray area because. Mike is working directly with the select board and, you know, Northwood Park. And then I'm kind of in this gray area, eh, not really representing the planning commission, but maybe to make things. Cleaner, eh, especially because I'm going to talk to the Jim Rotundo with the, the city. Or thinking about arranging the meeting, um, do you think that would be something that we should? Vote, do you think I should be representing the Rutland Town Planning Commission?
Well, if, if you're going to represent us, you're gonna have to run everything by us. And, you know, we'll be, we'll need to vote on things. Um, if you want to participate just as, you know, someone interested, uh, interested citizen. That would be a lot easier.
Okay.
I guess it's, um. You know, maybe, yeah, Dana.
Sorry, I muted myself there. Uh, based on what you're saying, Barbara, uh. I think that given the fact that this is in the very preliminary phases.
Hmm.
That, um, we could just allow Mary Beth to operate as a private citizen. And she can either continue to give an update on things that are happening that the select, that the, excuse me, the uh, planning commission would be interested in. Or she can offer that during public comment at the beginning of our agenda, whichever is at the pleasure of the chair.
Yeah.
But I, I think that it would be too cumbersome at this point in time for her to be representing the planning commission as a rep, a member of. Uh, a somewhat indistinct organization that hasn't fully formed itself, and that that would create a very cumbersome process for us.
Just let us know, if, if, if they ever ask, well, you know, do you think the planning commission would support this segment or support this or that? Um, just let us know.
Okay.
About that.
And just so you guys are aware, obviously, I'm not gonna make any decisions. Anything that we talk about, I would go to Mike Rowe. And then he would bring to the select board, so I'm kind of just this intermediary, just because I happen to know the people involved. Um, but I will keep updating you each time we meet as this slowly goes forward, but that, that all makes sense. I just wanted to run it by all of you guys.
Alright, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Um, and then the, the last item is, um, in a. One of my previous emails about conservation, um, topics, I mentioned the, um. This program that is run, um, a volunteer program for uh, environmental. run, a volunteer program for environmental education, run through Rutland Town School. Um, and they're looking for volunteers, so I'm participating in the program and some of the classes don't have volunteers to do the educational program. Um, it's called Four Winds, and there's a nonprofit that develops the lesson plans, basically. Um, so I was just wondering if anyone is interested in potentially volunteering, it's each month, you know, we just had a training this morning, it's about two hours. And then you would meet once a month with a class at Rutland Town School, it's all outside, the teacher's there helping you. Um, and it's once a month for the actual educational session and it's between an hour and an hour and a half. And it's throughout the year, so October, November through the end of the school year. Um, so if anyone's interested, just email me and I can give you further information about it.
Are there topics that you need people to help out on?
Well, so the curriculum's all there, so like for October, focusing on leaves, patterns in nature, so having the kids go out and collect all different leaves from trees and compare, you know, the shapes and the sizes and colors and just different characteristics and doing a little art project and so there's kind of a set curriculum that, and they'll, they spend the two hours each month training. You know, it alternates between Barstow, Rutland Town School and Proctor Elementary, but for the trainings and then your actual sessions would be at Rutland Town School.
So if someone's interested, they should contact you or?
Yeah, and then I can give them our information and connect them with the the person who's organizing the program. Yeah.
Dana?
Uh, Mary Beth, this is a great program, it's been in effect forever, almost. My my wife was involved in that a long time ago when all of our children were in Rutland Town School. It was originally run by Vins and then it was taken over by the Four Winds, as a result of some migration, I think of Vins to new locations and wanting a little bit more independence. But at that point in time, I believe most of those volunteers were parent volunteers from various classrooms. And I was just curious how much outreach Four Winds has done through each of the classrooms at the school to recruit their volunteers and is that how, what's the success rate then?
Well, that's the primary goal, so they'd like to have two parents slash volunteers per class. And some classes don't have anybody. Um, just, you know, because obviously a parent, like I'm volunteering for both my kids' classes.
Right.
But some classes, the teachers are reaching out, but they just don't have the volunteers, so that's why they're opening it up to the community members and I asked, you know, do I need to get fingerprinted or background checked, and they said, because it's all, the teacher's there the entire time, they're not as concerned about it just being particularly apparent and there aren't, you know, set requirements like that, because you wouldn't be alone with the kids or chaperoning or anything, it's just outdoors.
I might, I might suggest that somebody reach out to Castleton and ask if they have students involved in environmental education or science that might be willing to offer that as as service once a month. It might be very successful in having them come into those classrooms where parents are not available.
Or the the high school too, actually, Rutland High School Stafford Tech, maybe the forestry students, so that's a good idea, too, I can reach out. Okay, thanks. So that's it for me.
That's your report for tonight, okay. Can't wait for the next report.
Before you go, don't let Velco get away.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I was gonna go right to the minutes. Okay, yes, we have yet another, now, new news or whatever.
Velco, a couple of months or so ago, we did a substation up up in Post Road at the North Rutland Substation, if you remember. And the the plat is on file, it's been recorded and everything. If you remember, there was there's three parcels, so to speak, there's the roadway that goes to the Armory up on the hill. And then on the east side of that, there was a parcel and on the west side is a parcel. Velco is asking if we could put labels on a survey plat, and what they'd like to do is label the parcel that's on the west side as parcel number one. The road going up to the Armory is parcel number two. And the parcel on the on the east side is being parcel number three, and and they said they wanna do this for environmental reasons, they they get into a lot of environmental stuff and and they felt that it was really important and would like us to do this. So all they're asking is can we put labels on, they don't wanna go through another subdivision. And but what it appears to me is what they could do is they could get the surveyor to label a new survey plat with these parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three. And we approve of that and and they'll record it, and that's all they wanna do, so that's what what this is all about.
Then none of the boundary lines are changed.
Nothing, nothing, just just those three things, put a label, parcel number one, parcel number two, parcel number three, just three labels on a survey plat.
So they would bring that to us, that's what you would suggest, right?
Right, they would bring it to our next meeting.
Right.
And then.
We either approve or disapprove, whichever.
And I talked with Thomas Derry about it, Kirsten Thomas, and and she's fine with that. But once it's done, certainly we need their blessing because it is their survey, it's their survey plat, but but anyways, this is what they're asking for.
It's a Thomas's survey plat.
It's a Thomas survey, it's a Thomas survey plat, yes.
Are these parcels already separate pieces of land?
Yeah.
Or is it all one piece of land?
No, they're they're three pieces, there's they're actually surveyed into it. Uh, here we go. It's not on that map yet, Bill. It isn't, isn't on there.
No, I know, we don't, we don't have the new ones yet.
And the reason, the reason it isn't on there is because they they haven't purchased it yet, they're getting ready to purchase the property from the Thomases. Velco is, but they haven't purchased it yet, so that's why it doesn't show on our our map here, but.
Would that be part of the new deed, the the parcel?
Right, right here.
Names?
I don't, you know, the deed is very detailed deed, I I wouldn't think so, it's just a label, it's got a, these, you know, parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, I don't, I don't see it as needing anything else. We certainly have to have a record of it here that that that's what it is, so that it's done properly, you know, in the vault and so forth.
Should we have Velco come the next time and maybe a representative from the Thomas family as well? And then just.
They're trying to avoid that, but if that's what it's gonna take, that's why I.
Just trying to expedite.
I just met with them this morning, it was just this morning and but if that's what you want them to do, having committed, that's, that's all they're gonna tell you they wanna do, they wanna just put three labels.
Oh, that's what they're trying to avoid, they're trying to coming to, spending the time with us.
Right, they don't, if they have to, they will, but they I thought it would be simple enough so that
Shouldn't we have the Thomases?
Have them come in when we get the new survey plat, and somebody's gotta bring it into us when we get the new survey plat.
How are we gonna get the the Thomases blessing? On this?
They would have, yeah.
Whose plat is it, though? Who's the owner?
Still the Thomases.
Thomas.
And is is it owned by the Thomases as one parcel?
Three.
It's owned as three separate parcels, three separate deeds into the Thomas family? But it all appears on one survey?
Well, I don't know how they wrote the deeds up, but it's got certainly, I'm sure on the deed it must describe each of these three, each of the parcels. The road is already, yeah, yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be all three parcels, because they actually are showing that the road uh, the roadway consists of 2.63 acres, plus or minus. Uh, the parcel on the west is.
Okay, so can I just ask a clarifying question? These parcels are all parcels owned by the Thomases.
Yep.
But Velco wants the Thomases to include the numbering on the plat.
That's correct.
So what is preventing the Thomases? Because the the plat still has to be submitted, correct? What's preventing the Thomases from just labeling it as you have just described, Howard? And then have it be presented to us whenever that's happening?
Yeah, they, they, I think they would like bring it into the next meeting and and probably Thomases to bring it in, they they're the owners of this and they would have to bring it in to allow.
Right, we still have action to take on this, correct or no?
Say that again?
Do we still have action that has to come before the morning commission?
No, the the survey plat was approved, it was signed by Barb, it's it's on file in the vault here, they just wanna up, they wanna have a new updated plat come in with these three labels on it.
And we'd probably have to go through the same process of approving that plat.
Not go through subdivision.
No, but just do do some motion that we're approving a revised plat.
Do we have to approve the first one?
We already have.
Yeah, yeah.
Why, under what authority, if it's not a subdivision?
Subdivision. It was part of the subdivision process.
Yes, it was.
It was, it was part of the Thomas subdivision.
Yes.
And now they just wanna revise their own subdivision map, so it's clearer when they convey it that it's three separate parcels.
No, you've got two different parties, the Thomases have nothing to do with the numbering at this point in time. It's Velco that wants the Thomases to number those. And they want, they they want that to happen, they want us to give a blessing without them having to come in and review it just to put a number on, if I understood Howard correctly.
Right.
Well, it seemed to me seems to me that they don't have any standing to do that, that only the Velco, they haven't purchased it, the Thomases own it. And it's the Thomases who subdivided it. And it seems that it's the Thomases that should be coming to ask us to, I don't think we have any problem with.
You're right, Norm, but Velco will have a new survey plat made and Thomases will will bring it in, you know, they're gonna bring it in for their approval, but it's Thomas has to be involved here, it's their property.
Yes, that's correct.
So what's the best way to get them involved at this point?
Well, you know, just trying not to drag this thing on, they've been they're they're close to closing and they they just wanted to have this thing final, have everything in place when they when they closed.
So Howard, you made a suggestion 15 minutes ago about having the Thomases just label it one, two, and three. Because those are being conveyed to a new, a new owner, correct?
But a new ser, we we need a new survey plat with with the labels one, two, and three.
Is 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 it, is it our role to ask them to do that? Is, I mean, is that the next step, that we ask the Thomases to revise the plat?
Should, shouldn't Velco do that?
That's what I was thinking, but.
But but I mean, if if Thomases came in here at the next meeting and they had this survey plat with these labels on it and said, we would like to record, record it this way, are we gonna say yes or no? I mean, it's, they just.
Right, but how do we get them to do that? How do we get them to the to?
A phone call from me tomorrow, they're waiting to hear from me tomorrow, see if we're in agreement to.
I I make a motion to authorize Howard to call the Thomases tomorrow to ask them to please indicate the three parcels that are contiguous to the Velco property off of Post Road for clarification purposes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jerry?
And which, what are we, exactly are you asking for, the three parcels?
That the three parcels be numbered in accordance with your recommendation, Howard.
Okay, okay. I mean, you wanna receive, let have Thomases send us put it in writing, basically.
Let put it on a new plat and bring it in, right?
Yeah, have them, have them, see if they're agreeable and then redo the plat and and bring that into us in the next meeting or preferably the next meeting for Velco purposes, right?
Thomases did tell me today that they're they're agreeable, they they have no problem with it at all.
So they just need to amend it.
They're trying to help to move this along.
Okay.
They just need to edit the plat and bring it to us, right, and then we can
Yep.
Approve or disprove.
October 28th.
Okay, I I will, I will amend my motion to authorize Howard to speak to the Thomases about labeling the three parcels that are contiguous to Velco on Post Road, one, two, and three, west being one, Armory being two, and east being three. Uh, to help clarify for environmental purposes and that that be recorded on a new plat that would be submitted by our meeting on the 28th.
I'll second, that was a motion, correct, Dana?
Yep, I would amend it, thanks, Jerry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it passes.
Do not, do not record my aye, I spoke out of turn.
Aye, aye, aye.
We're gonna have to work on that, Norm. Okay, one more thing, the minutes from September 16th.
Move to approve?
I second.
Hey. Yeah, it was one of those long meetings. I don't think I noticed anything.
There's one typo, a couple of typos, I think. Uh, first page. Members of the public present, the meeting opened, I think it needs an ED. Everybody with me?
Yes, got it.
Okay, I have a second, a second one in case, and if anybody has another one, I have one on page two at the bottom. A second typo under old business, number one, second line suggested a list of questions to be, I think it's supposed to be compiled because it appears someplace else and it's spelled as complied. So, just a typo there.
What's a typo?
Uh, number one, old business on page two. Second line, suggested a list of questions be compiled, I LED as opposed to L I E D.
Oh, yes.
Page two, yep.
Good catch.
Thanks, that's all I found.
Okay. We ready for the question? That was directed to you, Norm. Do you have anything?
No, I'm sorry, no.
You you missed the meeting anyway, so you're staying here. Okay. All those in favor of the minutes or as amended? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? I think we've I think we all have our marching orders.
My motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
A non-debatable motion, so we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.